I'd like to call to order Monday, November 18th, 2013, our work session. Just to warn everybody, our regular meeting will have to begin right at 6:00 because we have public hearings in it, okay? So we'll kind of watch our clock on that. I need to announce that Bill Stip will not be attending this meeting this evening, so we don't need a roll call. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We don't even need to do that. But I get it anyway. I like to add and take away from the meeting, you know that, guys. We don't want a perfect meeting because people might talk, okay? Okay, so on to the program. We will receive, we will review and discuss the citizen survey, including overall tool and the process and review of timeline. Romina, you have the floor.
I do. Thank you very much. Tonight, I want to first introduce Tom Miller before we start the presentation. Tom is here from National Research Center out of Boulder, Colorado. He is the president and founder of the National Research Center. 2001, Tom, was the year?
We founded it, I founded it, in 1994. But 2001 is when we went into partnership with ICMA to do the survey.
Which is one of the reasons why we've chosen National Research Center to do the survey with us. It is an ICMA-approved survey. And we, as you know, are doing the partnership with ICMA on the CPM 101 program that measures our performance with the Valley Benchmark Cities as well as some other cities nationwide. So it seemed like the right survey to use, being that we were in that program already. Also, they came highly recommended from a number of Valley cities, including Chandler, Avondale, Surprise, and some others, when we did do some checking to make sure that it was the right tool to use. And there are several cities that haven't quite used them yet but are moving in the direction in the Valley. Really great results from so many of the others. Chandler was nice enough to send us over their entire 2009 results packet, which was fairly impressive, hundreds of pages of information. And so, since then, we've partnered up with Tom's group, and Tom's going to go through and share with you the survey itself, the survey tool, the timeline on the survey, some customized features that we're going to go through. And then, there are a couple of things that we're going to be requesting from council, so I want you to pay attention to the slide when we get to custom questions. Tom's going to mention it, but at the end, we'll go ahead and talk about the custom questions that we're going to be looking at. There was a sheet in your packets that had some questions drafted. If you don't have it in there, we can pull it up for you. And then, and I have a here, so we can do, use the Almo if it's not in your packets. And then, there's a couple of other things. There's some options on the survey that Tom's going to bring up. And then, there's one that's called an open-ended question, and we'll discuss that, too, and get your feedback on what you want to do with those. And so, I'll turn it over to Tom, and please ask questions as you feel the need to.
Okay, that's what I wanted to ask, is all right, Tom?
I was going to say that right off.
Re-interrupt your presentation, great. All right, we appreciate that.
Sure.
Yep, all yours.
Thanks.
You're welcome. I'm very familiar with the town of Boulder, because my daughter lives in Longmont, which is in Boulder County, so.
Well, Longmont, like Boulder, got hit pretty bad in this last flood.
Yes, they did.
If your daughter's still there, I'm sure she's got stories. We can talk about those later, I suppose. Anyhow, I'm very pleased to be here, and thank you, Romina. We are at National Research Center, all very excited about working with Goodyear, and this is a great opportunity for us to talk together, you and I, about what it is you hope to get from this survey. And I know that you've done surveys like this in the past, you've used different kinds of methods, you've used another firm, obviously, to do that, and I'm happy to answer any questions as we go forward that you might have about how what we're proposing is different than what you've done, and how those things can work together. Broadly, while Romina was saying that Chandler, for example, sent over pounds of reporting, one of the things that we've done in a fairly recent revamp of the work that we're providing to our clients is to emphasize the utility of these reports, and sort of the big picture, rather than bury you in the details of hundreds and hundreds of data points. Over the course of many years, doing citizen surveys has been the core of our business. So we've done them in over 350 jurisdictions across the United States, and we emphasize quality of community life, quality of service delivery, public trust, civic engagement. These are sort of the basic pillars, if you will, of quality community. And we want to emphasize to you, when you get the results back, how you're doing in the regard of these various aspects of community quality. So we'll talk about that as I try to move this forward. This little slide is a picture of something, I'm sure you all recognize it. It's a, I didn't recognize it till I saw it in the slide and was told what it was. This is what the Hubble telescope sees when it looks out into the galaxy. And what happens with the Hubble telescope is that there are a variety of filters that it uses to view the galaxy, none of which by themselves can be understood until they're all put together. And that really is a good metaphor for what we're talking about with the National Citizen Survey.
Kind of looks like our workforce slide.
So with regard to the National Citizen Survey, we have decided that the phrase "community livability" is important for us to understand and for us to use with clients, even though it's sort of been hijacked and turned into something that doesn't either have meaning for some people or has too much meaning. But the short answer for us about community livability is, are you creating a place where people want to live, not just where they have to live? And I know that across the country, and certainly in Goodyear, that is the intention of staff and elected officials, and we want to be able to give you some sense of how that's going. As we think about community, we think about these eight major facets of what make up a livable community, and those are shown here in this slide. They're the quality characteristics of community. We think they encompass virtually everything that a community is trying to purvey to its residents. So, from the economy to safety, the built environment, natural environment, and others, you can see that these are the major facets of, at least as we define it, of community. When we think about the other ways of looking at a community besides these eight major facets, we think about three pillars that support these facets. So I'm giving you this little framework because it's going to come back to be important as to what the reporting is going to be like for you when you get the results back from the citizen survey, so that it doesn't feel like, here's the answer to question one, here's the answer to question two, here's the answer to question three. But there's a, there's an integrated understanding of what we're trying to accomplish and provide to you, so that it has meaning and is actionable. So, these are these, these three pillars that I mentioned. They have to do with community characteristics, with governance, which really is service delivery, and community participation, which happens to be civic engagement as well. As an example, we might look at public safety, and we would say, ask people, what do you think about your sense of safety in this community? That would be a characteristic of the community. Then we could ask them, and would ask them on the National Citizen Survey, how are the police doing? And that would be something that would inform you about governance. And then, finally, we would ask them, at least in this one example, have you been a crime victim over the last 12 months? And so, there we would have some aspect of action or activity or participation, not one that we have a high percentage of, but at least it's, it's part of the framework of having these three pillars support the eight facets of community. The survey itself is about eight pages. When it's done by mail, it can be done by any of these three media. I'll say that the basic service is one that is done by mail, and we can talk about why we think mail is the right way to go for a basic service of this kind. We also can do this by phone, which I know is how you've done it in the past. And there is an option to offer people the opportunity to complete the survey on the web, with a web version of the survey. Yes, ma'am?
Stop right there. So if you did it by phone, you know, we all monitor our phones, we look at who it is first, and then we don't answer it. And a lot of surveys, there are a lot of things, I don't know if the rest of you are like that, but identify, you know, it identifies who the caller is. So, what would they identify, I mean, so, because this is about Goodyear.
Right.
So, I mean, you use your company name or survey, do you say Goodyear, you know?
Well, we, we probably can't say Goodyear. We've confronted this on more than one occasion. You'd be happy to know we couldn't say Mayor Lord, either. But we do often say Research Center, or there's an 800 number that's calling. I'm not sure, I don't want to say that using the word Goodyear is out of the question, but we haven't had success getting that to happen before. But I would say that that would be a better of the three opportunities to identify who's calling, that would be the best. And nevertheless, if I could just pick up on that, Mayor. The reason we don't recommend phone, there are several reasons. One is that it's much more expensive to do a quality phone survey per completed interview than it is to do a mailed survey. Furthermore, the responses you get aren't as candid as the responses you get by mail, if you do it by phone. And people are kind of tired of getting phone calls during dinner, which apparently is the only time that pollsters know how to.
No, not dinner, just dinner, at nighttime. I've got them as late as 10:00.
Worse yet.
Usually is 6:00 and 7:00 in the morning, and so, just so I don't hear the ring, I answer it and then hang up right away, so that, that's it. And that's how I treat them all. And I don't take any surveys off the telephone anymore.
I don't either.
Yeah.
And it's my business. But Pew Research does national surveys, and they do surveys not only about political opportunities for people, who they want to vote for, but policy and other kinds of questions. Two years ago, they said the phone, average phone response rate had dropped to 9% for their surveys. That's not untypical for the, for response rates that we get. We get a little bit higher, but we think it's because we're calling for the local government, and they're not always doing that. So these, when you got your survey results in the past, you had about 400 people who participated. And what happens is, when you hire a firm, and this is not throwing stones at the firm you hired at all, it's just more about the industry, when you hire any firm to give you 400 responses, in the past, they might have had to call, you know, 1,500 to 2,000 people, or households, to get that. Now, it's thousands more. And that's just another way of saying a 9% response rate means lots more people are getting calls, or there's an attempt to get calls into their houses. And so, that sometimes is passed over by the client, because you say, well, I bought 400 and I got 400. And it kind of sounds like that's 100% response rate, and it's not. So in the industry, the highest response rates these days are coming from mailed surveys. It's finally coming around to a method that we've had for many years. It's called address-based sampling, and it really means, and in our case, it means, you and we use the U.S. Postal Service lists of all of the households in Goodyear. And they are geocoded, so that's another problem with phones, now that they're cellphones and they're portable. You could have a prefix that sounds like maybe it should be around here, but that person is now in California. And so, the geographic specificity that we require to do a survey for you is much better done with an address-based sample and using a U.S. Postal Service.
Question?
Joanne?
So, and this, no reflection upon you. Unfortunately, I just had seen an unfortunate survey that we were hoping for 1,000 responses, and we received 160. And when you say that you are looking for 12, or you're sending out 1,200?
Yes.
Okay, so, so you'll start off with the mail, is what your, sounds like I'm gleaning from, you would mail out 1,200. And then, if you, and said average response would be around 37%, so you're hoping for 300 to 400 in that range?
Yes.
So if, if it does, for some reason, say you only get 120 back, and what's your next steps, then? What would be after that?
Well, we have, I don't think we've ever had that low a response
Okay.
Out of 1,200, but it, I mean, I think it's a fair question, what happens if the response rate is lower than we would like it to be? One thing to remember is that if we hope for 300 or 400, we have a margin of error that's around 5% to 6%, something like that. If we only got 200, the margin of error goes up to about 8%. And while it sounds like 200 is something we should be unhappy about in a certain way, if we're hoping for 300 or 400, we would rather have that than 200, the divot in terms of the precision isn't nearly as big as it seems that it would be if we didn't get the higher response rate. But that said, when we have talked to clients who said, well, you know, we really want a higher number, we have either anticipated that and sent out more to begin with, which is an option for you that we'll talk about, or we have sent out another contact, because the number of contacts research has shown is highly correlated with the response. So if we only, and we plan for three contacts, a postcard, and then two mailings that include the survey. We could have a fourth contact. And I would say that part of what we're expecting and hoping for in terms of a reasonable response rate is that the city would do what it could in terms of its publicity and encouragement to get people to know that the survey's coming, where it's coming from, what it's going to cover, and that it's for real, and it's very important that you fill it out if you've been selected at random to participate. So I would expect that you would have a better response rate, but if you don't, those would be the kinds of things we would do.
Okay. Joe?
My concern is on the statistical soundness, I guess, of the survey. And if it's 1,200 random, what I mean by 1,200 random, does it have a proper mix of our demographics when they're going out, number one? And when they come back, do you check to make sure that one group of our demographics, say 50 to 65, is not 80% of the respondents coming back, and only 20% of the ones, you know, between 21 and 30? Because the needs of the ones between 21 and 30, and 40 to 50, and 55 to 70, all may have different perspectives of what they would like to see in the city. So that's my concern from that perspective, to make sure that, from a statistical standpoint, we have a reasonable delta, maybe 5%, give or take, you know? And then, second, is that, you know, we have the right demographics mix when it comes back, so it's not weighted one side to the other.
That's a great point. And choosing 1,200 of your 25,000 or so households at random, it's actually a systematic sample, where we take every nth household till we get 1,200, and go through the entire housing unit mix, so that going out, we do have the proper demographic as well as household profile. But we can't guarantee that coming back. And you've hit on a very important and difficult problem for all of survey research, whether this is done by mail or by phone. Who's answering if it's done by phone? Who's not answering? So the biggest challenge for survey research is to, to understand what to do to avoid what is called non-response bias. People who don't respond leave those who do respond, who are in your sample, as not reflective of the entire community. So you hit right on the target group that generally overresponds, the older folks, the folks who tend to have more money, more likely to be owners in the community, less likely to be people of color. Those are the folks who tend to respond at greater percentages than they are reflective of in the community. What we do, because of that, is we statistically wait the data that come back, and that is pretty much a standard procedure for the best survey research. So if, for example, it is 80% of the folks who respond who are homeowners, and I haven't looked at the demographics of Goodyear to say that that's the wrong percent, but imagine that's too high, and you've got more renters, and it really should be only 60% homeowners and 40% renters. So the statistical weighting adjusts so that the demographic profile of the sample is a mirror image of the demographic profile as it's understood from the most recent census data of the entire community. And so, all the data that you would get, all the responses and the perceptions and the activities that are reported on, would already have been weighted so that the demographic profile looks like the profile of the community.
Thank you. Oh, Sherri?
I, Joe pretty much stole my question there, but it, when we're talking also about that, when you're talking about every nth household, does that make sure it covers, like, because we're kind of divided north of I-10, central, south of I-10, and we've got mobile, too. So I'm hearing zip code, is that how you figure out, so it?
We actually don't rely on zip codes. We rely on all of the U.S., all of the U.S. Postal Service lists of everybody, so that if you had 30% of the folks, did you say north or south of I-10?
I don't, I don't know the percentage.
Whatever.
It's about 50/50 now.
It's about, yeah.
50/50.
So whatever that.
And then mobile, too.
That would, that would be reflective of the, in the 1,200, or if it's 3,000 that goes out, that would be the right percentage, that would be the percentage that goes to folks. Now, the percent that comes back will depend on the response rates in each of those geographic subareas, and we can also have a weighting system that takes that into account, as well as the demographic differences.
Does that answer your questions?
So another feature of, of the National Citizen Survey that's really exciting is not only the ability for you to see what your residents think about the quality of community life, and what they're doing, and, and what they think about public trust and service delivery, but to see how that compares to other places around the country. So not only have we done, and this is just a kind of a schematic, that isn't really the specific places, and there are more dots than that. Now, we have about 500 different jurisdictions in our database. Their most recent survey is a survey that we collect, whether we've collected the raw data ourselves, or others have done the survey, and we bring those surveys into our database with some statistical adjustments. We include those so that you can look at, for example, here's what folks think about the, the police services in Goodyear, and here's how that compares to 400 jurisdictions, where they've asked this very same question about the overall quality of police services. Having that information is very helpful in terms of interpreting what the data mean. It's one thing to say, well, gee, code enforcement doesn't get as good a rating as fire service delivery. Well, it's always going to lose. Code enforcement actually probably lose to just about everything, to be honest with you, but, but there are certain services that get higher ratings than other services. And so, it's kind of an invidious comparison to ask people, what do you think about that service versus another? And more useful to understand what they think about that service in Goodyear versus that service elsewhere. So that's what these benchmarks are able to, to convey to you. We've talked about, or I've mentioned that the National Citizen Survey is done in lots of different places, and in fact, the, the value of having the same question asked in all these places is what permits us to compare your results to results elsewhere. But there also is a level of customization. Thank you. Did you see me drying up up here? Thanks. There is a level of customization that we can do, so that this survey works for you and asks the questions that you want to ask, and that will be most helpful to you. In this particular slide, these blue rectangles are the ones that reflect options that have already been selected by staff, and the, let's call those buff, possibly canary, or yellow. Those, those three rectangles are the ones that are still really up for you to decide. Actually, obviously, you can decide whatever you want on all of them. But so far, these options have not been selected, but they could be, and I could give you my recommendation about them, but we can accommodate any way you want to go. I've already spoken about what I think is the value of doing this by mail and/or web as opposed to phone. The phone option is meaningfully more expensive, and I think it's not something you have to do. It's certainly something we can do for you, if that's important. And sometimes, when I'm talking, especially to elected officials, it's their experience that surveys are called, first of all, polls, and that they're always done by phone. And, and the truth is that the things we hear on the news about who's going to vote for whom, really are surveys that are done by phone. And they are done by phone because the pollsters are in a hurry to track how opinions are changing over a period of time. But for our purposes here in Goodyear, where the intention is to use these data for other purposes, you, you don't have to be in such a hurry, and you can get as valid or more valid, we think, responses to the kinds of questions we're asking using these other methods. So we talked about, and Councilmember Osborne, you asked about what happens if we don't get enough sample. One of the things to, to do to hold off that option is to increase the sample size. So we have kind of two basic options, 1,200 out or 3,000 out. We can do anything in between, but the advantage of having more out is not only that you get more back, but that if you do have an interest in knowing about different geographic subareas, and having a more precise estimate from the survey about those subareas, then having a larger sample size would permit you to do that. And.
Do you put a timeframe on it? As in, you know, mail back by such and such?
We have one. We don't put it on any of the materials we send out.
You don't?
No. We find that all that tends to do is to get people to put it aside for the, you know, the day or two before, and then to forget that they put it aside.
Gotcha.
So we think it's more effective not to have that. But we allow about four weeks.
Sherri?
When you talk about increasing the sample size statistically, does that change, I mean, the results, or have you found that even when you do that, is it just, you know, more, but it's still the same statistics?
Well, that's an interesting question. In a certain way, we would, we do lots of experimentation in National Research Center. One thing we haven't done is to, and one thing we could do very easily, is to take a look at a subsample of 400 when we get back 800, and say, how do these 400 compare to the 800? From a statistical perspective, we already know the answer. It's not a, not a practical perspective, but from the statistics of sampling, the responses should be within a more narrow range of uncertainty for the larger sample than for the smaller sample. And that's what the sampling theory is all based on. So if we got back 800 instead of 400, the margin of error around that for the entire population would drop to about 2.5 to 3% from 5% at 400. And then, if you think about splitting the data out into, let's say, there are two geographic areas, and you had 400 in each, then you can get a 5% margin of error in each if it's 400. But if it's only 200, then each of those places has closer to an 8% margin of error. So a lot of it does have to do with the size of the sample. It's not only that, but in most of survey research, when people are talking about margin of error, they're only talking about the uncertainty that's connected to sampling. So you're sampling 800 people to stand for 40,000 adults. And so, having some people stand for all people has a level of uncertainty. They call it error, it's not really a mistake, it's just this level of uncertainty. And it, it accordions, depending on how big it is, the sample is.
Thank you.
Okay. So we can come back to one of these questions in particular, which was the subset of custom questions. And that's what Romina was suggesting. So let me just quickly, is there something else on the agenda? I just better.
We just have to be done by 6:00.
We're going to definitely be done by 6:00. So I'll, I'll go through this as fast as you'd like me to, but just to give you a sense of what the reporting is like, and to emphasize our interest in giving you sort of the, the big picture, the, the high-level view that we think council and staff, at least at first, would want to understand, this is part of what our overall reporting offers you. And these are the eight facets of community that I mentioned, and looked like kind of a galaxy before, and now it's a beehive, but we're going to, we'll stick with the beehive analogy. These colors represent the relationship of the ratings that you got from your residents to the benchmark compared. to the benchmark comparisons, so that in one graphic, you can see, how did folks rate safety? How did they rate mobility across the three pillars? So we look at the ratings across those three pillars, we put them together, and we say, on the whole, mobility was higher than the benchmark. So that's one set of information that you get from this color-coded beehive. The other thing is, are those stars? We ask people, which of these eight characteristics of community, these eight facets of community, are most important for you for your quality of life here in Goodyear? And this is just an example, I don't know where those stars would fall, but this will give you an opportunity to look at what people are saying are the most important facets of community, and how well you're doing on those facets, so that those two things can be linked and can be most useful to you. To go forward on reporting, this is just an example of some of the other report features that you'll get. This is out of the characteristics portion, that pillar of community, where we ask about things like, this community is the place to live, and the overall image and neighborhood, et cetera. This is an example of how we report the actual results, so that it's not every little detail. Those details that I mentioned are in technical appendices. We have a dashboard report that we think can be particularly useful for staff members in various departments, where they can not only see precise numbers, in the technical appendix, they can see the percent responding to every single one of the response options. This is a summary that looks at the top two excellent or good ratings in this case. The color coding, again, lets you both look at the percent who say excellent or good. For example, mobility, traffic enforcement, in this example, 81% of the people said traffic enforcement was excellent or good. That dark purple means it was above the comparison areas. So in one graphic, you get both those pieces of information. And finally, the whole purpose of doing this survey is about connection with community and action. One of the things we've found over many, many administrations of this is it's a great first step for council and staff to hear the residents, and to let them know that they've been heard. But a very important next step is to act on what you hear. And so, the entire set of reports that we offer you is intended to help you act on these results. There's a user guide, there's a guide for action that we give you in addition to the overall survey and the dashboard report, and we're working on a newsletter framework that you can then use and plug in the information you want to plug. But we're trying to make it easy for you to communicate these results and to use them. And we have many examples of how other jurisdictions have used their survey results, and we'll be quite eager to share that with staff and you when the time comes. That's my last slide, I'm sorry, I could go on until 6:30.
Any other questions for Tom?
Well, can I ask the city manager a question?
Of course you may. Wally?
My question, Brian, when was our last survey? And is this gentleman privy to the questions that were asked by that survey, knowing that they were very high in positive coming back? And are we going to do these surveys every other year, or, I mean, how does this work?
Councilmember Campbell, I'll answer the first part, and then ask Ramina to finish up on this. Our last survey was done in December 2011, with the results that actually came out in January of 2012. So that's, we're looking, every two years, we, as a city, have been doing these types of surveys. So, very important, we think, to do it every couple of years, just to, because it does several things. One is, is it does connect us back to the citizenry, as far as what their desires are for the community. But I'd like Ramina to address as far as the second part of the question.
So what we did when we worked with National Citizen Surveys, we took the last survey that we did, and we sent it over to them, so they could see the types of questions that we had asked in our last survey. In your survey tool, which we put in there, it's the third one down, it gives you an option for customized questions. And what we did is we said, in order to transition between the last survey and this survey, we need to, we need to look at a few of those questions, and make sure that we include some of those questions that were really important to us, or that provided us some more insight. And so, those were developed in your list of customized questions that we get to choose from, and that allows for that transition between the last survey tool and this survey tool, so that we can have some sort of consistency in the answers that we're going to be getting back. In addition to that, what we did was we worked with departments, as well as Katie Wilkin from the general plan, to pull questions that she has maybe heard that need to be answered through the general plan process, to give us some more clarification. And all of those, if you look at the fourth PDF that's listed in your Dropbox.
What's the title of it?
The title is WS, and it says dr.m questions. Do you see that?
I've got it up.
Okay, so, potential questions. All of these questions that we drafted come from either the old survey tool that we've combined, departments, and Katie had given us some input on maybe some general plan questions that would go in there. And so what this is, is what we need from council is that we have about room for four custom questions. There's about six or seven that are listed here, so we have room for four. So what we wanted to get from you is, which one of these four do you feel need to be added into this survey tool? And then, there's a third part, Wally, I'm sorry, this is a long answer, there's a third part. There's also an option for an open-ended question. Because we had open-ended questions in our last survey, we included those two open-ended ones, and those are also on this sheet, there's a three at the bottom. We included those open-ended, and if we do want to ask another open-ended question, we have option to do one open-ended question, we can do that also. So we tried to take as much from the old survey tool and incorporate it into this one, so that we have some sort of consistency in results moving forward.
So you're saying that this is what we want, this is basically the questions we're going to ask?
No, 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 this is in addition to the original, so they have the tool, which I've also-
Not these at the bottom, starting at the top of this one.
These are the additional. So we have an option to do four additional questions on top of the whole survey tool.
There's a whole survey, Wally, that you can go through.
There's another one besides this.
And it's the one-
Do you think someone's going to really do a two or three or four-page survey and answer it and send it back? I wouldn't.
About 37% on average of the folks do-
Really?
-fill out five-page surveys, yes.
Okay.
Now, the one thing you didn't cover, the reason we talked about this at council level, and I don't remember if it was this council, the last council, or what, but we questioned that they just surveyed 400 people.
Yeah.
And everybody, and were you here when we-
I was here, because they were phone calls, and we were concerned that that wasn't-
You were questioning, as I remember, you were one of them, I was questioning that, and so we wanted to see a survey that included more people. And so, henceforth, we're doing this one, because we've had a number, the 400 number, and we just weren't convinced always that that was a great cross-section, so.
Well, the thing is, Mayor, that even though we invite 1,200 households, 1,200 people, we don't get 1,200 back.
Well, I wonder about the 400, too, so, okay.
But typically, we will get something around 400 back, and if we do 1,200 out, if we do 3,000 out, then we would get more back, closer to 800 or 1,000.
Joanne?
So I read over the, it's very thorough. I mean, I did have concerns, kind of like what Wally said, about, you know, will there be fatigue, that they won't finish it, or they'll see how long it is, and then they'll just throw it away, because they don't want to take time. However, same time, you do it when you have the time, rather than it's a phone call, and it's that long. You know, I guess a couple of things that I remember from the, and I've, the length of time in the town council, I've been through a few of these surveys. I did, you know, we really emphasized on customer service, that our citizens are receiving from the city, and I think that you have that covered in there, so, yes?
Yes.
Okay. And it looks like some of these add-on questions that, Ramina, you brought in as custom questions, kind of like, where do you want your money spent? You know, is it on infrastructure, transportation, quality of life items? Looked like some of that is in here. The two that I'm missing, though, that have been important in the past surveys, and that are important, I believe, to our city, was back to the program of senior services or after-school programming. I do not see that within here, so I would like, and it's long, so if I've missed it, I apologize, but-
So in your survey tool, and Tom, you can talk, you probably know your survey tool better than I do, but in your survey tool, there is a whole section that talks about asking for you to rate-
Not the custom one, the first one?
Not the custom one, so go one above it in your Dropbox. That's the full survey tool that would be sent out. Now, in there, there is, there are questions that cover, you know, how do you feel about, it's actually number six under there, and it says availability of affordable quality childcare preschool, and then you rate that. K through 12 education, adult educational opportunities, there are, and then you can continue to go down, it actually does talk about senior care as well. So there are specific questions that ask them to rate what that service is. Do they like what the service is, what there isn't? And so those are, that's how it gets to those specific questions, is it asks for the rating of the city's services currently.
Well, those were important items for me, and I, like I said, I brought them up because I didn't, they didn't stand out to me. And I know that on our previous one, we asked about taxes in general, and, you know, I think we want, obviously, to be good stewards of our citizens' money, and where they want it spent is important, so I think you did kind of cover that.
Councilmember Osborne, just to get to your point about senior services and after-school programming-
Uh huh.
-that's slightly different. Even though we ask about the quality of those things, as Ramina was saying, we don't ask about how important it is for the city to invest in those, especially in comparison to some of the other items that we have for investing. So it's a possibility that we could add those there, if that's the angle that you're interested in, rather than the quality of them, how do you want us to spend our resources, your resources?
Right. Well, you know, I do feel that that's important questions. I know that it has changed in the last couple of surveys, because originally, senior services was very important, and I know that we collaborated with Avondale for their senior service center, and tried to bring that back up, and then the next survey, after-school programming was number one, and we, interestingly enough, and Sherry helped me out with this, I was told that the YMCA went from 500 children into after-school care, after-school programming, down to 50. And so, that's a big change, and so, you know, that's what I, I don't know.
I don't know.
You don't know? That's what I was told. And so, that obviously left our schools, that left, you know, some of that out, so I'm really wondering-
But we don't know why that is.
No, I, well, yeah.
No, no, we can't, we can't-
But that's why I ask, you know, in the past surveys, it's been in there, and people are asking, it was number one, we need after-school programming, and so now, hearing this, you know, rumor out there-
That has to be, I would say, pretty specific, we can't assume that that's the reason.
It's number six? It's after-school programming, it says?
Well, it says after availability of affordable quality childcare slash preschool K through 12, maybe they could say after-school.
Okay.
But once again, that's about the quality of those things, and it wouldn't be hard for us to add two more lines into question D in the custom questions-
I'm sorry, where did you say?
Where you've got a list of all these options for funding, we could include senior services as one, and after-school programming as another.
We just want to, I think we just want to find out if there's interest.
Yes.
Not commit us that we're going to do something.
Exactly.
We just want to know if there's something out there that we aren't missing, because I noticed snow removal and stuff like that, and I know that's not going to be on our-
We'll do well.
Because we don't have that issue, but it needs to be on our radar.
Yeah, right. We have two senior communities in Goodyear, okay, so that, henceforth, we have two of them that have a homeowners association, which is very active, and normally, they have sort of their own health programs and their own direction in them, although they still need some help. So I guess that's where the question's coming from. But then we have a number of seniors who are living in not a natureway. And when we started some of these programs, I remember, we got together because some seniors complained to me about they didn't have such and such, I think it was, I think I was in a council in there. And so we brought Parks and Recreation into it, and to them, they produced a program. So, we really don't, probably don't have the number and the handle on it. It may be we don't have enough in our city, that we, they're already taken care of, that, so that's, it's probably a good way to find out.
Mayor?
Joe?
I think it's an interesting question, but my concern is, how would you word it? Because they may want funding, but not necessarily a city to pay for it.
So if you go to-
They may want the school district to pay for it, or, you know what I mean?
Right.
So, when we ask it, we've got to make sure that they want city funds to do this, or they would like to see their school. So that's my only concern by putting it in there, you may get an answer. That's why I have a problem with open-ended questions. You have to interpret what that open-ended question means. So it becomes more difficult when they write, where were they going with this? Because, especially when they put a string in it. That'd be my concern, will it get you the answer that you're looking for?
Well, I think what we're proposing is that that, those two questions would appear not as an open-ended question, but a question that has fixed options, essential, very important, somewhat important, et cetera. The stem of that, which is in D, is how important is it for the city to fund these things?
Perfect, perfect, yeah.
Oh. It's in the custom questions, the add-ons?
Right.
If we would just add those two to letter D, if you look at letter D, that's the way the question's worded, if the city funds it. And then we would just add those two pieces to that list.
I have a quick question.
Yes, Joe, I'm sorry. I'm scrolling through it, too, so I might have missed it. When I saw employment status, do you work inside, Goodyear, obviously, would be the question? Am I missing, like, do we have a distance requirement? Because I think that's kind of important with the transportation, or did I just, I could have just totally missed it, Ramina.
I think in the template, there's a bunch of questions about where you live.
Because I keep sliding through it, and I see, do you work there, but I was looking-
Do you work full-time, unemployed, looking for work, not looking for work?
I have-
Do you look inside the house, outside the house? I'm not sure.
Well, I was talking, like, for transportation, a lot of our population commutes outside the city, and I think in before, in the other ones, we've said, how far out do you commute? We've gotten, like, distances.
20 miles, 10 miles.
Yeah, oh, I get it. Do we have that?
It's not a question now, it could be one of the custom questions, if it's an important topic to cover.
I don't, I have a question. So I know that we have some stats on that, and where do we get those stats? Because, if we can, Sherry, I know that I've seen them from community development, and, you know, on reports, so where does that come from? The county?
It's probably MAG, isn't it? The census stats? And I could have been seeing the stats from one place and forgetting where I've seen it, too.
Yeah, so some of that is already out there, but I'm not sure quite where it comes from.
The census does have data about how far people are commuting, if they're commuting, and how far the trip is, how long the trip is, where.
Sherry, if you're here, would you like to-
Mayor, councilmembers, so, a good bit of that data actually comes from recent surveys that we've conducted. For example, with our retail study, we analyzed the census data that showed us where the resident lived and where they work, and then also by occupation. And so that data allowed us to draw some conclusions, as well as our retail survey that was recently conducted as well, also looked at some of those numbers, and that was also basically drawn from the census. And they were fairly consistent to a bottom-line number that was around 90% of our residents traveling outside the city for their occupation each day.
So I guess, weighing on that information, do we want, you know-
If we're capturing, like I said, I don't know where I've seen it somewhere else, I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, it's from Sherry's information she puts out, so-
Yeah. No, we need to waste a question if we're getting it somewhere else.
Does everybody agree with that? I guess everybody agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Before we run out of time, we do need a couple of things from the council. One, do we want to do additional surveys? So do we want to send out more than the 1,200? That's really important to get a feed from you. And then we can always get some more feedback on the questions through emails, we can discuss that, but there's a couple of things, there's that, and then the other piece was-
I'm sorry, you were saying you want us to give you a number? Are we pleased with 1,200?
Are we pleased with 1,200, or do we want to do more? Do we want to mail out more surveys than the 1,200?
Does that cost more money?
It does.
Well, yeah, yeah, but I'm, is it, now, he, Tom's recommending something, I mean-
Well, I think there's always a trade-off in survey research about cost versus precision, and you can get more precision if we send out more than 1,200, like 3,000, say. But there is a cost, and you probably know it better than I do.
It is, $7,100 for the additional, to mail out 3,000.
An additional $7,100.
Yes.
And what was it for 1,200?
It's part of the basic package.
Which is- Which is what?
The whole basic package is ten thousand, three hundred.
But it almost doubles the cost.
Yeah, so you're almost doubling it.
So, and in comparison to the previous years, I mean, what have we budgeted for this in?
We've budgeted twenty-seven thousand dollars for this.
Okay, so this keeps us in budget and increases our odds.
Well, I think going from four hundred to this new number is, is, yeah.
If we get twelve hundred, he's not saying we'll get twelve hundred.
But we have the same thing with four hundred, and so.
Can we, I'm sorry, can we, if, I don't know if you can do this statistically, if it works, but if we don't get enough back, can you go back and send out the other fifteen hundred? I mean, is, can you do that, or is that not statistic? Do you screw everything up if you do that?
You don't screw it up from a statistical perspective. It's, there's a cost implication of that too, because there's kind of a system in place, and if you wait and, and-
It'd be more expensive.
It would be more expensive.
Well, you've done lots of these surveys, and so accuracy, what is the percentage or average of accuracies for the city that you're finding? The feedback you get from the cities?
Well, the accuracy level is reflected in those margins of error. And so the accuracy increases meaningfully if you send out three thousand and get back more than double what you'd get back if you sent out twelve hundred. I am purposely not saying we're guaranteeing some number that you'll get back. This is an estimate from lots and lots of work across the country, and these rates of return vary depending on the community and depending on the publicity that goes out with it. So it's not something that we all can perfectly control, which is true for a phone survey. You can't control the response rate. You can better control the number. And so back to what you were saying, Councilmember Loretano, if, for example, we say we're gonna send out three thousand and we don't, and you want a thousand, and we wanted to, and we didn't get a thousand, you can send out more. The response rate is lower, but the number you get back is higher, the margin of error is smaller. So it can work, it's just there's a cost to doing it in two pieces rather than one.
I'm gonna assume that we didn't have a problem when we did the four hundred.
What problem do you mean?
Of not responding.
No, that's different, because what you, what there is is four hundred guaranteed phone calls, so you're gonna get the four hundred, because that's what you've paid. So even if it takes them three thousand phone calls to get the four hundred, you're gonna get the four hundred.
Okay, all right.
But that was also reflected in the higher price for that survey as well. That's why the budget's at twenty-seven.
Okay. Opinions on this? Joe?
First of all, if you wanted some feedback on the questions, I have those. I've got four picked, or whatever it's worth.
Okay, you can just give those to me.
I can give them to you. Second thing is, I think for the additional amount of money, it's worth our effort to find out what our citizens are doing. Seven thousand dollars, I know it's a lot of money, but at the same token, there are no guarantee on what percentage you're gonna come back, as opposed to somebody calling. And being a, being a numbers guy, I would like to see that delta shrink, you know, so we really know what's going on out there. And if we get more coming back, maybe we can figure out by neighborhoods as well. You know, Councilmember Loretano was asking about, because we'll have enough to see what's north and south, as opposed to only having-
In central.
Yeah, in central, you know?
Let's not forget central.
Well, I'm not gonna forget central, but my point is, is you're not gonna get that probably if you only send out twelve hundred, from what I'm hearing. You got a more possible, probability of getting more back in. So I don't have a problem going with more, because I think it'll give us more information that we need. You know, we'd like to see what our citizens are doing, and I think it's a worthwhile investment.
Cheryl, in?
Excuse me. I think also that when you have four hundred responses and seventy-one thousand people, it's a whole lot easier to defend that we are touting a satisfied community. When you say we had four hundred responses, I've heard a lot of, yeah, sure. I, I'm agreeing with you, Joe, but not necessarily for the same reasons, or in addition to your review.
I guess my last question would be, how would we get out to our citizens to say, hey, be looking for that survey in the mail?
So we're going to work, there's a, there's a article already slaughtered for the January InFocus, because we wouldn't start this survey till January after the holidays and whatnot, so we'll have that timeline worked out with the company. And then we would do ads, and then we'd make sure that it's through, Katie would get it out through the general fund plan, probably throw it on the web.
The HOAs and all that, okay.
We do everything else, HOAs, we do a neighborhood email. So there would be a lot of information going out, saying, if you get this survey, please fill it out. The only other question I have for council before we wrap up is the open-ended question. Now, that is also an additional cost, and you get one open-ended question, and that's fifteen hundred dollars. Again, it doesn't take us past budget. Anything that we're offering does not, does not go over our budget. It all stays within budget. But the open-ended question is one open-ended question, so it's one of those, do we have a burning desire to ask that fifteen hundred dollar question? And if so, what would it be?
Mayor, I-
Yes, Joe?
I just think open-ended can be interpreted so differently. I don't, I don't see the value in an open-ended question, I really don't.
I just don't, personally, I don't want to put the extra into that.
I'd like to see what they're gonna ask in the first place, and I think that's gonna be more than enough, really. It's pretty detailed, so.
If I could just say from my perspective, and it's kind of from a numbers guy too, there's a certain part about open-ended questions that I don't think is worth spending time and, and money on. And that's because even if we get, let's say we get four hundred back, we get a thousand back, you're not gonna get four hundred or a thousand people who fill out that open-ended question. So that's one side of it. I just wanna also say from the observation I've had of how elected officials view open-ended questions, they seem to like open-ended questions more than I do, and more than, even than the graphs and the tables and the charts that all of us quant kinds of people like, because it's the only way you really hear the voice of the people in their own words. So I just thought I'd throw that out there, because that is an aspect of the open-ended question. And you get back the open-ended verbatims, expurgated if necessary, but also aggregated so that you can see, you know, the themes that come with it. And I, I think not doing it is a fine conclusion, but I just wanted to give you that other perspective about how other elected officials often view these open-ended responses.
Personally, I think they like them because it gives them a hedge factor.
Yeah, I, I, open-ended is sometimes comments come back that it's really, you're not asking those in that vein.
That's true.
And you are going to get the extremists, you know, people that are angry or, you know, something happened to them that way concerning the city. So I think I like it more defined. I don't know about anybody else?